I thought she was kind of...
I still know what they're sticking around. I may get out of here right now. Uh, right feet in the mud and I got...
Yes.
From the fires, I had to help her. I got sinusitis. And then I turned around, slipped in my kitchen, threw my back.
That's kinda nice to do.
So I just hunkered down for like two and a half weeks.
That's a lot. And then events, the big events that Chris Carson does. I'm, me and him are working on that together. He becomes our city manager.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. He does a great job.
I told him, I said, "Do whatever you need." It's a lot. Hot on nights, when you're in a weekend's heat.
Oh, yes. Easily. I mean, he's just like really working hard.
Yeah, he got it.
Really, he works a lot. And he's here all the time. I mean, he's at the conference all the time. Everything works.
Everything works. I've never seen anything cheating or...
Well, maybe behind the scenes or some stuff. Yeah, I don't know. It all, it all works out well. That's amazing. He's been doing it for a long time.
Yeah, he's coming tonight.
You know, you don't always see Chris at these meetings.
Yeah.
You don't. Um, because, well, we've got a light amount more coming to get to, so he's probably...
That's a lot, too. I'm excited. It'll be my first one.
My name is Cal Rolson. I'm a council member. I'm accused of being the senior council member. I think that means age principally, but I don't know that for sure. But I'm pleased to announce to you all, and pardon my back, and pardon my front, newly-elected city council members. As the public policymakers of Mount Dora, the city council on behalf of the residents, businesses, taxpayers, all citizens, users of city services, set the future direction of our beautiful city. Besides the great pay we've all received, the duty of loyalty to our residents is our principal reason for serving, and nothing is more important than the four gentlemen and lady that were, that were here, are here this morning, or this evening. It's my high, high honor to welcome you all as new council members to the next two years of city service and to be one of your colleagues and to learn from you and share with you the duties that we all undertake and will undertake for the next two years. And so I join all of you residents that are here to witness this. I join you in welcoming our new council members. The voters of Mount Dora have the duty, have duly selected the following residents as members of our city council. So the following electors to the Mount Dora City Council, please step up and be sworn in by our city clerk. And they are Honorable Nick Jerome, our mayor, Honorable Laurie Tillot, city council member, District One, Honorable Mark Creel, city council member, District Four, and Honorable Harmon Massey, city council member-at-large. The clerk will swear you in.
Thank you, Councilmember Rolson. It is my privilege and my pleasure to get to be the one to swear you all in for our charter. If you would please raise your right hand when I say, "Please state your name," I'm gonna have each of you state your names individually and then we can do the balance of the oath together. I...
I, Harmon Massey.
I, Mark Creel.
I, Laurie Tillot.
I, Nick Jerome.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Protect and defend...
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Florida...
And the Constitution of the State of Florida.
And the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Mount Dora...
And the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Mount Dora.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign...
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith.
Loyalty and allegiance...
Loyalty and allegiance.
To the same...
To the same.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
Perform all the duties of the office...
Perform all the duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Cal, for doing that honor for us tonight. Appreciate very much. Well, thank you, Ms. Jones, for the swearing in and not using any bad language and doing so. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's now 6:05. And this is your regular city council meeting. And we're going to stand for a moment of silence in a pledge of allegiance, how we need that tonight.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the next item, I just want to express my thanks to everybody in this city for the prayers and all the love they gave my family. Just thank you all. And a, do we have a vote in both, please?
Mayor Jerome?
Here.
Ms. Tillot?
Here.
Mr. Creel?
Here.
Ms. Hope?
Here.
Mr. Rolson?
Here.
Mr. Massey?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
I'm gonna get on with the election of the vice mayor, and I'm gonna call upon myself to give the first nomination. And I'm gonna pass the gavel over.
Well, I, I was going to...
I recognize myself as the first. So I'm passing the gavel. And... Don't talk. I'm going to nominate Kathy Hoakes for vice mayor. Is there any other nominations?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Mark Creel.
Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will vote in the order of the, that they were nominated. And so we have a roll call vote on Ms. Hoakes.
Ms. Tillot?
No.
Mr. Creel?
Yes.
Ms. Hoakes? Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Mr. Massey? Mr. Tucker?
No.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Ms. Hoakes has been elected the vice mayor. Would anybody like, at this point, before I make the final roll call, would you like to make unanimous at this point? Make unanimous at this point? It's up to you.
I'm making unanimous. I'm second to them.
Okay, so we'll make it a unanimous for, for Ms. Hoakes.
Can I say something, ma'am?
You may. We're gonna go down in order, but anyway, please.
Well, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Tillot, and everyone. I will do my best to be your vice mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One comment, too.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm gonna have everybody, new council members, first make a, um, a comment, if you don't mind, at this point. So, Mr. Massey, would you like to make a comment?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Now, I'm on. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I can't tell you what a delight it has been to meet all the division heads and to visit in all the divisions of the city. I have yet to meet anyone who did not have absolute pride and joy in what they did, and that's really very reassuring to me. I look forward to working in this community and being a part of this family. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, well, first I, I wanna, Mr. Slavy, stick around. Thanks again, Mr. Slavy, for your service to the, to the city. And thanks, everybody, for your confidence and let me come back for two more years.
Well, I'm gonna echo Mr. Creel's comments. I, I appreciate that everyone in my district who had the confidence in me over the last two years and brought me, you know, for another two-year term. And I also wanna thank you, Mr. Slavy. It's been a pleasure serving on council with you for the past two years. And I, I welcome Mr. Massey to this table. And I think we're gonna have a good, productive next two years. So thank you all, and thank you to my husband for, um, being, being a real, a real support for me for the last two years. And keep it up.
Again, it's, um, yeah, again, it's a, it's a pleasure serving the city as the mayor. And it's, uh, and it's an absolute honor and a privilege to do so. Again, Mr. Slavy, I wanna thank you very much for your two-year service. And we've had a whirlwind two years with you on council. And I'm saying that because it's very, it's very good. It's a very good time. You brought a lot of great ideas to this council, and we backed a lot of your ideas. And we owe our new city flag to you. So thank you very much for what you did. And I'm looking for, again, looking forward for the, the next two years. There is a lot happening in this city, and this council has proven its, uh, its worth over the last couple of years. It's, uh, I think that no council, I think, has ever worked harder than this council has worked. And Mr. Massey, we're glad to have you on board with us. And so we're gonna be rolling up our sleeves and getting to work. And as of right now, except for Mr., Mr. Rolson, wanna make a comment? How do you wanna make a comment at this point?
I thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank a couple of people. I wanna thank Councilwoman Tillot for her service for the last year as vice mayor. She's, I know she ran two meetings and did an excellent job. And it's, uh, it's an impressive council. And you were one of its leaders, and thank you, Laurie, for your work. Mark Slavy, thank you very much for your two years. I was impressed we would rassle once in a while, which is what is good to do when there are things that need to be discussed. And most often, regretfully, you prevailed, I think. So I'm impressed by that. And thank you for the privilege of serving as one of your colleagues with you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Massey, Councilmember Massey, I am honored to serve with you as well. I look forward to working with you in all areas of importance to this city. And I know you bring a great deal of credit to the city by your service. And to the other council members that are reelected, again, I have the same comments here at the dais for the privilege of working with you. And I just wanted to say that at the beginning, rather than late at the end. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now we need to do a very important resolution. The approval of Resolution Number 2017-170, accepting the certified election results from the canvassing board and the Lake County Supervising Elections. Have a motion for accepting the results.
I move 2017-170. Second.
And, uh, making, who, you wanna?
Yes, go ahead, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for all about that. We do have a title on that, so please read it.
I'll still make the motion after we've done it.
Okay, thank you. Resolution Number 2017-170, a resolution of City Council of the City of Mount Dora, Florida, accepting the canvassing of votes for the general election in the City of Mount Dora held on November 7th, 2017, declaring the results of the general election to the office of City Councilmember-at-large, O'Dear, declaring other pertinent matters and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
And, um... I have, I have my motion.
Yeah, motion, or I have a motion in a second. And MSAs, would you wanna read the results? The total results?
Sure, sure. Honorable Mayor, city council members. So, um, we had election results as to District Three. Uh, the city council-at-large, O'Dear, Harmon Massey, had 1,160 votes received. Jer Murray had 879 votes. Thank you both, Mayor. Um, I don't think I need to read anything else.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much. And, um, so have a roll call vote on that, please.
Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Creel?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
I'm abstaining because I'm a participant.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
And, uh, this time for...
I think you should, I don't think you should know that that's a valid abstention. I think you would vote to accept the results. If you've done anything wrong with them, then that might be, um, you would have to have a certain reason, a financial conflict. I believe you should vote.
And I will change, but withdraw, withdraw my abstention and vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Then let's come forward. And, um, the, um, now's the time for the public to come forward and to, you're about three minutes to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. And when you come up, please state your name and address. And, um, so I have, let's see, two parts here. I have a Pam Bisanti. Thank you. Your free minute is up already.
All right, here I am. I'm Pam Bisanti, and I live still at 150 South Clayton Street. I'm here to revisit the problem we're having with traffic on Clayton Street. First of all, I wanna thank Chief O'Grady and Sergeant Wade for responding to our concern from the last meeting. They put officers on the street to slow the traffic down, which is extremely helpful. However, unfortunately, the second the patrol cars left, the traffic backed up again. Uh, I know that the chief has concern for the safety of all the citizens of Mount Dora. I can't expect him to have police on Clayton Street all day, every day. Let me lose my breath. Um, Clayton is a residential street. People are coming in from Orange County and are using it to avoid the lights on Highland Avenue. I believe the only way to solve the problem is to find a way to divert the traffic back to Highland, where the speed limit is 35 miles an hour. To do this, I am strongly suggesting stop signs. And those are kind of marked on your thing. If anybody has any questions for me, um, I'll be happy to answer them. But a stop sign at Shirley between Liberty and First, and a third between First and Fifth. I've given each of you a diagram. I'm told to do this and watch the speeding traffic go by. It's ridiculous. Um, I have been increasingly angry about this since the last time I was here. I am not some gray-haired old lady who has the time to sit on her front porch while cars go by. I work eight to 10 hours a day. But before I start that day, I have every right to expect to be able to sit on my front porch and have a cup of coffee and not have the zoom, zoom, zoom of speeding cars go by. The mothers up the street send their kids down to the bus stop should have every expectation that those kids will be able to cross Clayton without getting killed. We should be able to back out of our driveways without the fear of getting hit. So I need to know where I start to get these signs going. Until then, starting Monday, I will be standing in my driveway, in my pajamas, in a bathrobe, with a cup of coffee, with a sign that says, "Slow down," because I'm tired of it. I guarantee I will get laughed at, honked at, and sworn at, but it will also cause attention to the problem. I would prefer the stop signs to the pride pajamas, but I am not above doing this to get things done, to be, to be done. I have always been respectful to this council when I speak and will continue to do so. But please, don't confuse what right now might not seem calm, uh, but it is, my tone with the concern for the problem. I'm frustrated, angry, and fed up. There needs to be a solution sooner or later. And remember that submission of me and my pajamas. Thank you.
Yes, I do. My fire...
It is your first amendment.
This is new phone. I have no idea.
It is your first amendment.
Thank you.
Tell me to run your, run your thing for you?
And we have, um, thank you very much, Ms. Slavy.
Sure.
And, um, Rosanne Abato, Patriot Cruz.
Rosanne Abato, 541 East First Avenue in Mount Dora. Just came to give you a brief overview of the Patriot Cruz and Salute Event last, on Sunday, November 12th. I'm gonna make a few remarks tonight. And then, uh, at the mayor's request, we'll do a slideshow presentation in December, which I'm working on. Uh, I haven't had time. Uh, we, we served, honored 27 veterans on 14 boats. There were almost 100 volunteers. Veterans and their guests totaled 61 people. They came from 16 cities outside the Mount Dora area, including Port Orange, Lakeland, and Beaufort, South Carolina. We served veterans from World War II to Afghanistan, and there were four World War II vets, with the oldest being 100 years old. This is the best example of a public-private partnership I can, I even know about in this town. Uh, it would never have grown to this point if it were not supported by the city in the way it is. There are many of you to thank. The Fire Department for the amazing cannon waterfall and the flag display off the ladder truck when the boats come in. That's probably the most photographed part of the whole day. Well, that and the Honor Guard. The Police Department's Honor Guard is amazing. That's the best Honor Guard. So many of our veterans who are volunteers say that's the best Honor Guard I've ever seen. They presented three flags to our three oldest veterans, aged, aging at 190 and 90, and there was not a dry eye in the crowd. Parks and Recs, thank you very much. They always give us the pavilions for free. Uh, and they give them to us in plenty of time that we can get everything set up and be ready to go on Sunday morning. Chris Carson, is Chris here? Uh, Chris makes this possible every year. By the way, Chris, it's, uh, November 11th. If you wanna go ahead and put that on your calendar for 2018. Uh, he does it with a smile on his face. And if only Chris would be out at dark the night before putting reserve parking signs in the ground, so... And he, he contacts me regularly to see if there's anything else I could possibly need. Uh, Lisa McDonald did a great job of getting media and press coverage, and she posted great videos and photos on the city's website. And as a result, I have 13 requests already for veterans who wanna be honored next year. So I don't need any more press coverage right now, Lisa. Ms. Hayes, thank you for supporting the people who support me. They're indispensable if we're going to continue this at the high level that we have together established. And Mr. Creel, I saw you in the food line. That was a real smart move. You must have heard that, uh, that Larry Baker in 1921 were preparing the food, and I saw you helping serve. Thank you very much for that. And for that, you will get a T-shirt when we give out the rest of them tonight. If you've got a red T-shirt on, you can always get in the food line. So you all should know that if you get one of these. Mr. Mayor, you were an integral part of the day, and we really appreciate it. Considering your personal circumstances, it was a real honor that you came. It meant a lot to our volunteers. It meant a lot to their guests. And what you said about the military was poignant, and it meant a lot to everybody, and it was right on the mark. And we thank you very much for that. So I have a few T-shirts to give out to those of you who have helped us so much. And if the size is wrong because I guessed wrong, uh, I have brought some extras. And if you see Chief O'Grady not getting one, it's because he already has one, so...
Lisa?
Well, thank you for the extra small.
That's Mr. Grinder's. Please, that's yours. This is Chris's. And this is Mr. Hughes'. And I did bring that one.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and for all what you did today. Says one size fits all. Is there anybody else in the public wish to address the council on any matter? Can we have some more, please? Thank you. Is there anybody else who wish to address the, the council on any matter not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Um, we, can I have an approval of tonight's agenda? Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And, um, all favor?
Aye.
Agenda is so moved. And, uh, approval of minutes from our city council meeting on November 7th, 2017. Have a roll call for approval.
I move approval.
Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
And I got a proclamation here for Small Business Saturday. And, um, I think, as we know, uh, small business in this, uh, in this United States accounts for a lot of economy throughout the, you know, our whole United States. And it raises, uh, you know, so much of the taxes and the revenue that this country needs to survive. And most of it, like I said, the majority of it comes from small business owners. And, uh, so this Saturday is the time when we get to, uh, tell people to get out there and support our small businesses. So we have a proclamation to, hopefully that will demand you to go out there and do business with, uh, small businesses this coming Saturday. Thanks, this Saturday, correct? Okay. Whereas the government of, of Mount Dora, Florida celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make for our local economy and community. According to United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas Mount Dora, Florida supports our local businesses that, that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday, after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Major, and Mayor of the City of Mount Dora, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across our country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Okay, uh, we have some resolutions tonight. And we have 2017-161, the Christmas Walk fireworks. And Ms. Cal, please, we have the color red, please.
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 2017-161, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida, approving and authorizing the closure of the Fourth Avenue Dock for the launching of fireworks, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for... administrative actions, providing for savings provision, providing for scrivenor shares, conflict severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Um, this is a request for the closing of Fourth Avenue Dock and the launching of fireworks as part of the 2017 Christmas Walk Event on December 1st, 2017. The Christmas Walk is an annual event co-sponsored by the Mount Door Area Chamber of Commerce and the City of Mount Door. The event will entail street-side holiday entertainment and activities for everyone to enjoy. There'll be two designated areas secured for alcohol service, which will be coordinated by Price's Rising and Magical Meat Boutique. The Christmas Walk is classified as a city cornerstone event, with the event being covered by the City of Mount Door insurance policies, therefore taken care of. There will be street closures in the downtown area at the following locations on Friday, December 1st. From 4:30 till 9:00 include Donnelly Street at, um, at East Sixth Avenue, Donnelly Street at East Third Avenue, Alexander Street at West Fifth Avenue, Alexander Street at West Third Avenue, East Fifth Avenue at Baker, Fifth Avenue at Alexander, West Fourth Avenue at Alexander, and East Fourth Avenue at Baker. Um, there will be fireworks displayed, launched from the Fourth Avenue Docks at approximately 8:45 PM, and we'd like to have permission to, um, from the council to approve.
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions from council members?
Yes, just, just one. Um, I just wanted to remind people that, um, from 6:00 to 9:00 on that same, um, evening, the, uh, Mount Door Community Trust will be having their, uh, open house, so wander up the street to, I think it's 8:21 Donnelly, and, um, have a little mingle and jingle up there at the Community Trust and see what that's all about. So I just wanted to kind of do a little quick plug for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one question of, who is the sponsorship?
Chamber.
Chamber. It's a co-sponsor between the Chamber and the City of Mount Door.
Are they paying for the fireworks?
They, uh, paying for the fireworks.
That's what I wanted to know, who's paying for the fireworks? The Chamber.
The Chamber. Chamber's on there.
They secured a sponsor. It doesn't say they're paying.
But they are paying for the, and I can bring Mr. Carson up, we will, Chris, they are paying for the fireworks. I believe this is their third or fourth year doing that.
Chris Carson, Special Maintenance Coordinator. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Um, Trusco Bank is the sponsor that was secured from the Chamber of Commerce to pay for the fireworks. Thank you.
Okay, any other, um, questions, comments from council? Seeing none, anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a roll call vote, Ms., um...
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Okay, we need approval, approval of Resolution Number 2017-162 to New Year's Eve fireworks display, and, um, Ms. Conkoff, can we have that title read, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 2017-162, a resolution of City of Mount Door, Florida approving a temporary extension of Dakota Ordinance's Noise Ordinance Section 46.120 from 11:00 PM to 12:15 AM, providing for the use of a fireworks display to accompany a New Year's Eve block party to be held in the pedestrian mall in Sunset Park. Authorizing closure of the Fourth Avenue Dock for launching a fireworks, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, and providing for scrivenor shares, conflict severability, and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor, council members. Um, this is a request authorizing temporary extension of the noise ordinance, uh, for December 31st at 12:15 AM on January 1st. Excuse me, from 11:00 PM on December 31st to 12:15 AM on January 1st. Um, request for closing the Fourth Avenue Dock and launching the fireworks as part of the 2017 New Year's Eve block party on December 31st. This marks the fourth year of the New Year's Eve block party hosted by Price's Rising along with the host sponsor. This events is close, event is co-sponsored by City of Mount Door and Main Street Leasing. Um, this is to, we are requesting to extend the hours of the noise ordinance from 11:00 as stated earlier on December 31st to 12:15 AM on the 1st. This will take place, um, the fireworks will take place at midnight, um, and will be launched from the Fourth Avenue docks. We have reached out to Lakeside Inn, and they've been notified and have been, uh, part of the process. Rusty Anchor has also been notified of the event. Um, as stated in this one, uh, this particular presentation, um, the, um, Main Street Leasing has sponsored the fireworks display and the amount of $5,000 to be reimbursed to the city after execution of the fireworks agreement. Thank you.
Have a motion for approval.
I move approval of 2017-162.
Any comments, questions from council? Seeing none, anybody from the public wish to address this? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call.
Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Approval of Resolution Number 2017-163, award the RFP bid, uh, 17-09-001 for the IT Strategic Plan, and Ms. Conkoff, can we have the title read, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 2017-163, a resolution of City of Mount Door, Florida to approve the awarding RFP 17-09-001, the IT Strategic Master Plan to Barry Dunn, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, provide, authorization for execution, providing for savings provision, and providing for scrivenor shares, conflict severability, effective date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, again, we request the, the award of the RFP that was properly bid. Um, as you've seen in your information here, we had a grading criteria, there were several pieces and parts of this, we provided you the score, the highest score, um, submitted to you. There was a team that was composed of an IT manager, a police department, police sergeant, and a budget officer from the finance department, and the information has been presented to you as the most responsive bid, uh, from Barry Dunn. Um, and I would just like to state that in the, from the budget perspective, this was budgeted in 2016, '17 for $50,000. If you recall, I believe I brought this to you at mid-year, um, will carry forward those funds, uh, use approximately, um, $24,860 for the, uh, contract at this point in time. The remaining funds will go into the budget and can be reallocated at some point in the future, uh, but they'll be carried forward, so that's your funding source for this particular project. Um, I know Mr. McKinney's here from the finance department to answer any questions if you should have any. Thank you.
Have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from council? Mr. Rolson?
Um, my view is, I hope I share the same view with the rest of you, that strategic planning is important in any, police services, anything else, city council, that's strategic planning, we think that's important because we spend some time doing that. And IT services, these days, um, I'm old, but I still understand the value of strategic services, of IT services and the strategic plan to support that. Uh, without that, there is a, an IT rudderless ship, for, for example, to use an old cliche, that can be dangerous, and this protects us from those dangers. I'm, uh, wholeheartedly behind this, and I think it's overdue if we didn't do it much before.
Well, I echo what Mr. Rolson said, and, and having retired as a CIO from a large hospital system and Ryan in IT department, um, I know how important the strategic plan is for the department, and I will be very interested in following this. One question I had, though, there's extreme discrepancy between the bids, because two are at $24,000, give or take, and then you've got one as high as $75,000. What did you note in the, in the proposal that it was such a huge difference, three times more than, you know, just curious?
Mr. McKinney, can you come up and answer that for us, please?
Or could you even tell?
On the price, it was a component of the selection committee, it wasn't the overall.
Right.
So based on the type, the committee felt that, um, going with a low bid wasn't necessary.
Yeah, I don't have, I just, it's just such a huge difference. Do they think they're that much better?
That was the overwhelming recommendation by the committee. Um, obviously, council can choose to go with the lower bid, but the committee did, did find that, um, that was the one worthy of going with.
What, you did, you did go with the lower bid?
Okay, I'm getting my bids confused, sorry.
Yeah, we're just wondering.
I'm just wondering that...
Twenty-four thousand versus seventy thousand, was there a prize or something involved in that higher bid?
You never know the makeup of the company. You could have a company trying to get in at a lower price, so, and, you know, if they, we go to issue a, you know, a, um, add-on next, you know, in three years, five years, whenever, that they got in the first time, so when they come the second time, sometimes the bids are higher, not always, but every firm has a different price structure.
I'm, I'm comfortable in that at least we, of the five bids, two of them are very close, they're less than 100. So, okay, so I, there's, and then the others kind of went up just so much more. I just, just an observation, I'm not questioning the recommendation, I just find it interesting that it's that much difference.
It all in the break, the makeup of how firms structures their fees.
Okay.
And I think a lot of times that we, we've noticed in the past, um, that, um, the tenure of the person working your job also makes a difference on the pay structure, so that could be a little bit of it with that particular firm, may not be the tenure that they actually have in the overall, uh, field in which they're specialized, but we, we have noticed that. Um, I think, too, the other thing you'll notice, um, you know, people, firms are out there, consultants, they need, they, they want our, our work, so they want to work for us. So I think they're also, you're seeing some of these, these bids come in with reasonable, um, submittals, because again, they know the government has, we typically have to select the low bid, so that's usually the price we're looking at, so they have to be competitive. Um, may not be all of what was turned in this time, but I think we're seeing some more of that, because you've seen in the last six, eight weeks, when you saw some of the bids, there's always one that's a little bit more, and the other two or three are more in that same ballpark, even tonight when you look at the, the pickleball courts.
Yes.
You see two very close, and you see one that's, that's out there a little bit more. So I think you see, I think you'll see a lot of, of that type of, uh, differential in, in sour, or in, um, consulting submittals.
Okay.
Just a comment as a possible explanation. Uh, in my experience, 150 years ago, a lot of companies that were doing bidding, you'd always have a high bid because that company was maybe very busy, and if they hoped to steal it for a, a huge price, they would take the time, they, they would spend the time making that money, but money, but, uh, for other reasons as well, but I'm sure there's a logical explanation as to why they're there, and we really don't care.
Sometimes you're supposed to be the only bidder, and, um...
I, I think it would be more, for me, it would be more concerning if there weren't at least two within the line, and it would be more concerning if we had only three bidding. We have five, so we have a great spread, and the numbers were just, for me, it caught my attention when I went through it, and I forgot to mention it when you and I met, that there was such, um, a big difference, so we should be good then.
Not trying to really analyze it, but a lot of times you'll see that, so there'd be a typographical on there, there'd be a, a calculation error somewhere, and a decimal point somewhere, and they just didn't catch it and submitted it out, and somebody's gonna be fired next week, so, and over that. Anyway, any, any, anybody else from the council wish to address? If not, anybody from the public wish to address this issue? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2017-167, award the RFP 18-FN-001 for auditing services, and Ms. Conkoff, can we have the title read, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 2017-167, a resolution of City of Mount Door, Florida approving the awarding of RFP 18-FN-001 audit services to Purvis Gray &amp; Company, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, and providing for scrivenor shares, conflict severability, and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, this is a request to approve the auditing services with, uh, Purvis Gray &amp; Company. Um, the city, um, went through the, the mandatory pre-bid meeting on October 19th. Three companies attending, uh, met all the requirements, submitted their bids. Um, if you notice that, uh, we've included the total, uh, original term price and the total term price, so that you would see what was submitted, as well as the scores. During the initial term, the savings with Purvis Gray is $18,500 less and over the entire period, a savings of $37,950 to be achieved. Additionally, Purvis Gray demonstrated, um, the required knowledge in reference to electrical utilities. I think you recall a couple of years ago, that was a, a key, um, factor in selecting of the, um, prior auditing firm, uh, Purvis Gray &amp; Company. First year audit fee is $54,900, city budgeted, um, in that, in this current year, 1718, $68,250. Um, so there is a difference there that will be left in the contingency in case any additional work is needed, um, based on anything that they find, um, in which we'll bring back to you in the future, and we, um, request that you approve and proceed.
Mr. Chairman, motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions from council, Ms. Tillot?
Yes, um, actually, I do. How, how long have we had our current auditor? Didn't we just release that auditor?
We did.
And how long did we have it? How many years?
Two years.
We had that for, for two? And then, um, who was the auditor that we had before that?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Moore, Stevens, and Lovelace.
Moore, Stevens, was before?
Um, that was our current auditor before this evening. That was brought to you on July 7th, 2015.
So that was Moore, Lovelace?
Stevens and Lovelace.
Moore, Stevens, and Lovelace. And who was our auditor before that?
Purvis Gray.
Okay. We see, that's what kind of concerns me, is I, I can only assume that we had some of the issues that we had recently for longer than the two, just the two years, and so if we're now proposing to go back to the same firm that we had prior to that, I, that gives me pause. And I would think that we should look for a firm that we've either never had before or possibly had for, you know, longer than just five years ago, if you, if you understand what I mean. I, I just, you know?
Uh, ma'am, I've been doing this for quite a while. We have representatives from Purvis Gray in here this evening, um, if you'd like to bring them up and ask them a few questions. I can tell you from, you know, from governmental side, any one of the three firms here that were, um, submitted, um, bids are great. If you're talking about electrical utility, which, you know, not every government has, which we do, uh, Purvis Gray is about the only firm in the region that is as qualified as they are. Some of the things that have been brought up over the last few months, I believe, in my opinion, have only surfaced within the last couple of years, and I believe that, uh, Ms. Hayes has put in the appropriate staff and finance, that we are gonna get all this rectified. Um, we were speaking this evening about the, the current CAFER and the change that we want to make, and I believe that just staff making these changes is gonna, um, provide things that are a lot more transparent and easy to find and easy to fix. So all I can ask is, as council, is, you know, again, give Purvis Gray another shot. You have me, your new finance director, that is going to sit here and work with them to, you know, bring things as transparent as possible, and I think when you see, um, Mrs. Hayes', um, um, financial report that's gonna be presented this evening, you can see the level of detail that I'm trying to bring to the finance department, and that will allow these things not to be, um, put by the wayside. So all I can ask is give me and Purvis Gray a shot, and I believe that we will exceed expectations of the city.
I can say that, um, in, uh, review of the CAFER, this, the current CAFER that we had compared to, um, a couple of years ago, uh, the prior ones with the prior company, there was Purvis Gray, there was a change, um, a little bit of a change from what staff presented to you. Um, I, again, I was not here, so I can't go back and speculate, other than to say that, um, there was some direction provided, uh, from the firms and, and the data that was submitted. I agree with our finance director, we've made a lot of changes at the city, um, this last few months, um, that opened the door for us to be able to see some of the things that should have been reported, um, at this point in time. You know, I would say we go with a one-year contract, no matter who we go with, and we hold them accountable, no different than you hold myself accountable for the city, and I hold, um, this department accountable for this CAFER. So, um, I don't know that, um, uh, selecting with, with the three companies that were selected, I don't know, you know, uh, who else we would have submit that would be of a lesser quality. I think what you have, these top three, our top three firms, not saying that some of the other companies that didn't submit aren't as good, but they, their workload was probably too heavy. too heavy, so therefore, they couldn't submit. Um, so, again, I think we go through the process, we can bring back to you quarter reports. We will be working with them one-on-one, going through it this year, um, and not just one person working on the CAFER, we have a team of people now working on the CAFER, you haven't had that in the past. So, there's a very different setup in the finance division, for working toward the, uh, the CAFER, or the audit.
I obviously support the resolution, uh, the, we went through the process. Uh, there were multiple reviewers, including the person standing in front of the podium right now, and, uh, we have experienced finance director that is respected statewide. We have an experienced manager that certainly knows a bit or two about finance issues and auditing issues. Uh, it's good to move this around, from time to time, with different auditing firms, uh, and they are well-respected, I have no problem with that, I think we, I expect to support the resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I agree that we should, you know, rotate around, and I believe our charter requires us every five years for a new one.
Yes.
I guess I just have a problem with sort of the revolving door, but, you know, where you sit out for, for five years, or, and then you go back to the same one. Um, and that's, that's me. I just, I, I don't know how long the, some of the issues that we've had recently have actually been in place, and, and, you know, you're new, mom's new, and so, um, um, I will probably get outvoted, but, but I, I think I'm not gonna support this.
I, I will support it, and, and I'm comfortable, Ms. Tillot, in that, because I obviously sat on council back when we made the other switch. Um, sometimes there are lessons learned, how you communicate differently to get the word through, and I would hope that that's part of what will happen with Purvis and you all. Um, my other question, though, really, is an educational one for myself. If they are the ones who best, um, know the process for an electric company, and the others don't have that expertise, when others are chosen, how do they do that? Do they just truck through it, or do they subcontract for someone to come in and do that piece, or how, how is that done, if they don't have that expertise within their company?
Uh, the way I write an auditor RFP, I try not to allow for any subcontracting of any work, 'cause that creates additional issues.
Exactly.
I can tell you that every firm out there, in my opinion, and they can definitely come up here and speak on their behalf, but every firm has a specialty. You know, this firm, I believe, if you look at who they serve, clients they serve, they serve a lot of utility companies. You go and you look at James Moore, they, they serve a lot of municipalities, but they also serve a lot of, um, nonprofits. You know, so that's their specialty, nonprofits. Uh, we also had Cherry Becker, you know, they're also a huge firm, but again, they specialize in, you know, some of the bigger government entities that do not have electric utilities, but that's their specialty. I feel that Purvis Gray's specialty is electric utilities. Um, yes, our, our, our charter does require a, uh, every five-year rotation, um, that's the charter. Um, if, if you ask staff, we'd say, hey, could we have a ten-year, but we have a mandatory partner rotation, just like, um, changing, you know, a bank, it's a lot of work to change auditors. You know, the first year is, you know, obviously gonna be a lot of work, the second year's still a lot of work, it's starting to be easier for staff and the company, year three, four, and five, so, um, you know, it's definitely, thank you. Um, it's definitely going to be a, um, you know, a change, you know, switching from this, you know, auditor to that auditor, but I do feel that with the team that we have in place, again, this is gonna be a whole different level of accountability, and also, you know, uh, just look at the CAFER, as the city manager has stated, you know, I look at the current CAFER, and I have to, you know, it takes me forever to figure out where something is, but in the format that I feel is, you know, the standard within the state, that's where I wanna go.
I'm comfortable with that.
Just a, just a quick question, the, um, I would assume, I was just making, we're gonna, we're gonna assume, but, that the state sets guidelines on how cities are to be audited?
Actually, there's guidelines from GASB, um, United States of America, the state of Florida, and every other, um, agency that we get funding from has some type of requirement, you know, from our single audit, um, to, you know, how we format a CAFER. I mean, there is a rule, a regulation, law, a pronouncement, something that dictates how we present that CAFER. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that I'm not arguing about changing every five years, I think that's wise, um, so, just as long as everybody's nodding their heads, I have no, I have no issue with the requirement to change every five years. The only issue I have is going back to someone that we have had so recently before.
And I did, just for the record, I did go back and look who, um, submitted bids, um, two years ago, and I can also tell you that the other firms that submitted, that did not submit this time, do not have a, uh, a lot of experience in electric utility. That honestly is our biggest item, you know, to be in compliance with GASB 20, you know, and how to account for electric utilities. So, you know, again, I believe that Purvis Gray is the firm that is the most qualified for the city. Anybody else? Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, back to council, and Ms. Johnson, can we have roll call vote, please?
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
No.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Approval of resolution number 2017-168, approval of the year-end bid. And Ms. Confront, could we have the title read, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Resolution number 2017-168, a resolution of City Council of Mount Door, Florida, adopting final year budget adjustments to the 2016, 2017 fiscal year budget, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, and providing for discrepancy errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Um, this is a request to approve the budget, the final year-end budget, uh, fiscal year 2016-17. Um, we're establishing, um, new adjustments to the general funds, special revenue debt, service, capital improvement, enterprise, internal service fund, um, as exhibit A that, uh, Mr. McKinney will hand out to you. Did you provide that earlier?
Uh, I provided it yesterday.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I will go get copies, maybe, real quick.
Oh, if we can hold off on that, then?
I'll get an email.
Oh, okay.
Was it hard copy, or? Um, I'm sorry, I, I emailed it, I didn't have, think the correct copy.
Oh, I didn't get one, so, I didn't get an email.
No, I'm sorry, I sent it, um, to the city clerk, so maybe I didn't get sent.
Okay.
We'll have it.
It'll be an adjustment, copies in one second?
Yep, yep, there it is.
Mine, you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's on the back.
I'm just checking my email, yeah.
That's it, that's it, I don't have it in my packet.
So, yes, it was added to the packet.
Where?
Page, page 170.
Did you read down, no, it would not be on your printout, Ms. Tillot?
It's the back page of 170.
I have this.
There, it's in your drop box.
In my drop box.
Did you redownload?
178, 177, 178 starts Florida Central Railroad Company. I don't, this is the new one. Must be a third one, I don't either.
Here.
If you guys share, then I can...
We're cool.
We're cool.
We're cool.
And you don't wanna share with me, I've got it. I got the button. Yes, right. Remember, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so there again, trying to bring something different to the city, is making sure we're in compliance with state statute. Uh, by state statute, um, 218, we're required to bring before council, um, an amended final year-end budget no later than 60 days after the close of the fiscal year. So, our fiscal year closes on September 30th, so we have to provide this to you no later than November 30th. So, what this, um, sheet tells you is, it lets you know what the original fiscal year 2016-17 budget was, which was 54,502,598 dollars. Throughout the fiscal year, the budget got amended to 58,352,394 dollars. So, after, um, the city manager and I went through the, um, budgets of all these funds, this is where, um, we have come up with an adjusted budget, um, final budget for fiscal year 1617 of 73,078,872 dollars. The first thing that I just wanna point out to y'all, just like when we were discussing the current year budget, September 21st, there's changing, changes in how we're accounting for stuff. You know, we created the, um, um, internal service funds, um, we've, um, created some other funds. So, so there again, you have your operating funds, which is the general fund, water, um, sewer, electric, um, stormwater, sanitation, et cetera. Um, so, you know, when you have those funds, there's expenses in those operating funds that are also shown in the internal service funds. So, um, I wanna point out that I've created two funds at 9:30 that I want to highlight. Number one is, um, Fund 412, which will be the electric utility stabilization fund. What that fund will be utilized for is, obviously, as we do a rate study, um, they're gonna set rates sometimes, you know, that are smooth over five years. So, they might be creating, you know, suggesting a rate to council today, that's helping to fund a capital project in two years. So, if, if the rate consultant suggested that, I wanna put that money somewhere that the operating fund cannot utilize it until the year that it's programmed. So, that's what Fund 412 is. I've also done the same thing for, um, um, water sewer, and, um, that will be, um, Fund 424 Water, um, it says WS, but it's Water, Wastewater Stabilization Fund, 424, okay? And then also, Fund 425. Uh, previously, that was shown as, um, the 2014 notable construction fund, and I want to formally change that to be the Water/Wastewater Construction Fund. And the reason for that is, is I do not wanna co-mingle in Fund 421, um, operations from capital. So, this fund will specifically be where all construction occurs for Fund, um, for the Water/Wastewater Utility. Um, other than that, um, I've not created any more funds, but there again, I'm wanting to just make sure as we go through, um, fiscal year 1718, that we're creating more transparency, and also, what are we really spending the taxpayer and ratepayers' monies? So, overall, as I went through, um, this budget, we did a, a whole analysis of where we were at 9:3016. I've looked at where our revenues and expenditures were in fiscal year 17, so that I've come up with, um, the recommended final budget. Um, one of the things that I definitely wanna highlight is also in Fund 310. We had budgeted in fiscal year 17, a debt issuance for the Public Works Complex. Obviously, that has not occurred, so staff is gonna be bringing back here in the next couple of months, um, a design for y'alls review, and at that time, we would wanna be going back out on the bond, um, market to issue new debt. So, you're going to see December 14th, Jeff Larson, our financial advisor for debt, is going to be coming up here and discussing several debt issuances that might be forthcoming within the next 12 to 24 months. So, in my opinion, this represents a, with all the changes that I discussed, and how we're accounting for stuff, and, um, cost allocation, pile-offs, transfers, et cetera, uh, this 73 million dollar, um, final budget represents what I feel to be, um, the final budget that would be shown in the 9:3017 CAFER. And also, what would be put in place into the adopted 1718 budget that we are putting out for your review here in the next two weeks.
Mr. McKinney, can you, um, address for the council, so they have an understanding? When you said internal service funds, and the fact that we calculate them in one, in one place and possibly in another, can you give them some direction as to what funds you are referring to, so they can have a cross look? Uh, because this is a new concept for them, and we spoke about it as we've gone through the budget year, um, but late in the budget year, if you recall, and, uh, I want them to understand. Plus, let me just state that some of your general fund dollars include IRMA, so there was an adjustment because of hurricane in September at the end of our fiscal year. So, a lot of your adjustments to the general fund are really due to IRMA and some of those costs that we, um, have paid out.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, to me, our operating funds are obviously the general fund, um, the electric fund, the consolidated water/wastewater utility fund, the sanitation, um, utility fund, and the stormwater utility fund, and the cemetery fund. So, we have six operating funds that do, um, business within the city. I mean, you obviously have the general fund, which is your, you know, your general administration, your police, your fire, your parks, those are the ones you, you see. But then you have your enterprise funds, which is your electric, uh, your water/wastewater utility, your sanitation, stormwater, and cemetery, those are the things that you don't really see, you know, in the public all the time. You know, we have the water plants, we have the sewer plants, um, but then, you know, you really don't see, you know, the water sewer guys and the electric guys unless, uh, a utility lines on the ground, or, you know, you have a water main break, or a sewer main break, and then that's when you'll see all those guys, you know, in the, the middle of the street, with it, with the, the street cut open and working. Then you also have your stormwater, which was something that was established here in the state of Florida in the late 80s, to track and account for stormwater conveyance. So, you know, remember back in the old days, you know, you could just build a building, you didn't have to worry about where the rain, um, went. So, our stormwater fund is, you know, what helps to, you know, contain and control the flow of water. Uh, then you have our cemetery, you know, we have a city-owned cemetery here off of Donnelly, and so that's an operating fund. So, again, the general fund is your taxpayers, and then your enterprise funds are your ratepayers. So, what, so they also have services that they need. So, you have vehicle replacement, you have vehicle maintenance, you have, you know, health insurance for the employees, uh, you have, uh, property casualty insurance that the city has to procure. So, these are all services that, you know, the government has to have. So, instead of trying to go and look at what these costs are, you know, within all these six funds, we capture and pay for it in one place, within Funds 501, 510, and 511. And, you know, in that way, so when we, when we cut the check to our insurance provider, or, you know, our vehicle lease provider, whoever, I go one place. I don't have to go in six funds, but those six funds might have 30 divisions, that it's all spread. Even though they're paying for it one way or another, I wanna go one place, and see one line, how much did I pay for property insurance, how much did I pay for workers' comp insurance, how much did I pay for healthcare? I wanna go that one place. So, that's just a difference in how I like to do things, is, in which is appropriate, that's, you know, the way generally accepted accounting practices are, is to have the different levels of funds. Yes, ma'am?
So, so what you're saying is that, in the past, the spreadable costs of vehicle replacement, health, and workers' comp were spread to the utility?
They're all spread, but most everything was in the general fund.
Okay.
So, what was happening is, is that the general fund was paying for it directly, and everyone was paying the general fund for that services.
And now you just...
And now all I've done is, instead of it being in the general fund, I put it in a, um, internal service fund, because it operates like a quasi-business. So, at 1718, remember, we also, um, created the information technology fund, you know, because there again, we need to know how much we're paying. Y'all just passed this evening the, um, IT strategic plan, so, we need to keep track of what we're actually paying for. So, if someone comes down to us three years from now, well, how much did you, you know, you did the strategic plan, but how much did you pay for it? I don't wanna have to go to all these, these six operating funds... I don't want to have to go to all these, these six operating funds and calculate it up, I want to go one place.
Do we have a motion on this? Do we need to?
I don't think so.
Oh, we need a resolution.
I have a motion to approve this.
I move with approval of two thousand seventeen dash one sixty-eight.
And I'll second.
If it's been read.
And any other comments from the council?
Yes.
One other.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know relatively little, comparatively speaking, maybe more than some, but I know relatively little about the complexities of budgeting and finance and such things. But it seems responsible to me that the changes you have made make sense to those of us that are kind of in the la-la land regarding all of this. I've seen disasters in, maybe that's too strong a word, I've seen disappointments that I've hit in other entities in which I've had some policy responsibility regarding budgeting and we track the dollars. This all seems to me, it seems responsible. It's required by law, as you've said, and so we certainly, so council need to comply with the law. I think our, again, to reiterate what I said before, our financial people are trusted. I'm trusting them, and it includes all funds fees and everything like else in here. The relatively small amount is the general fund. So it's a, it seems very, to a simple mind like mine, responsible to do this, that's why I support this, and I'm really pleased to see, as much as I understand, the changes that you've made.
Now, I agree, I, I find it easier to have the lowest common denominator and be able to roll up and add up instead of trying to pull things out of higher level, you know, funds, amounts of money. So I support this as well. I like the fact that everything is, you know, I like the fact that we now have separate fund for capital only for wastewater, sewer, wastewater. I have just one little quick question about the self-insured health. Just wanted to confirm that that's on your plate for review this, this year, to review our process and to review our, whether we want to continue that in the future or make changes, et cetera. So. I've made, it's on our schedule for January, City Manager, HR, and Finance to get together to do a complete comprehensive review. I actually had, we had a city manager staff meeting this morning, I gave them a financial report at nine thirty seventeen, and also as of October thirtieth, that I'm asking every director to meet with me within the next two weeks so that we can start going through, because obviously I wasn't here during the full budget process, I'm trying to, you know, fill in the informational gap that I have. But I believe with, you know, once you pass this final budget, more, you know, I appreciate that, but more importantly, you know, by allowing me to establish these funds, I'm putting the groundwork in place, the backbone, to now, you know, in my opinion, take our financials to the next level of accountability. That's great. I heartily approve and commend you for this, for this work, and I like this structure.
And I agree too. So if I were to see a sheet that's the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget, I would have one column to start out with because we would probably at this point not have any amendments, and during the course of the year then, I would be able to see.
That's correct, and you'll actually, this evening, under the city manager report, I'll be coming back up here with your financials, and you won't have Fund Twelve, or Four Twelve, and you won't have Fund Four Twenty-Four, it hasn't been approved yet, but by the time you have your November report, all of this will be updated and reflect what you've approved this evening.
And yes, ma'am, you'll have the original, and the amended will be in the, in March when we bring you mid-year, and then you'll have a final.
That's when you'll see a column.
Time next year.
Okay, very good.
Consistency and the setup.
Just real quick, I had the opportunity in the past, in my past life, to do a lot of budgets, not to this extent, you know, we're doing all these utility services and all the services that we have to do that a city provides. But one thing I did learn over the years, when my first day out doing a budget, was detail, what Ms. Tillot mentioned. And the more detail you have, it allows us to be transparent, it gives them more accountability, and allows everybody to see exactly where your money's being spent, and the more detail you have. And like she says, it's much easier to, you know, to take all the numbers and combine them and try to pull something out of, you know, just one number and then try to break it out again in the future, it's all a possibility. So I commend you getting this, this budget more detailed, I think Ms. Hayes and I thought about that when we first did her interview about the detail on the budgets.
And again, I couldn't do this without the great staff in finance, so I thank them for all their hard work to put this together.
Just as interruption, I hope you will give, at least mine, I'm assuming this accounts as thanks to your staff as well.
Absolutely, sir.
Putting all this together.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to address this issue? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, may I vote a call, please?
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Approval resolution number twenty seventeen dash one sixty-nine, an amendment to the agreement between the Florida Central Railroad Company, Inc., and the Lake County, Florida, and the City of Mount Dora. Ms. Concroft, will we have the title, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution number twenty seventeen dash one sixty-nine, a resolution of City Council of the City of Mount Dora, approving an amendment to extend the existing agreement between Lake County, Florida, the Florida Central Railroad Company, and the City of Mount Dora, authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute any instruments required to implement this action, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm actually going to read through for just a moment this memo because again, I think the Wakava is such a, a big item that we've talked about for years here. This is request for the city council to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash one sixty-nine, an extension and amendment to the contract between the Florida Central Railroad Company, Lake County, Florida, and the City of Mount Dora, to extend it to November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. The contract was entered into on November thirtieth, two thousand twelve, and as per the contract section two amendment, both Lake County and the city had several options by which to proceed in accepting the railroad line from the Lake Seminole Line to Mount Dora. The Wakava Trail is proposed for this existing railroad line, which is owned by CSX, which is transportation company. Florida Central Railroad Company, FCRR, is the one who operates the freight line on this track. The existing agreement between the parties, if exercised, would compensate FCRR to extinguish its lease with CSX and abandon the railroad service on the line at a cost of one million dollars to Lake County and one million to the City of Mount Dora. At the October twenty-fourth meeting, Lake County approved a vote on the option to extend the agreement with Florida Central Railroad Company or FCRR until November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So again, they've asked us to follow suit. This extension will increase the cost of the project from one million for the city to one million, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Under the existing contract or agreement, there are several options to Lake County and the city. One, we could have exercised the contractual right and paid the two million, one million each to FCRR to abandon the lease with CSX. The option two was to extend the agreement to November thirtieth, two thousand nine, which is what we've opted for, and to pay the original fee of two million plus the fee to extend a fourteen thousand, five hundred divided by the city and the county, which was the seven thousand, two fifty. Or the third option was to terminate the agreement. So what we presented to you again is the same thing as the county's accepted and presented is an extension of this, this option in order to exercise the future right of the, of the lands by which have been presented to us. It's not tangible land, we know that's the issue, it's the right to the trail so that the trail can be converted, or the rail can be converted to a trail, I should say it that way. So we will continue to work with both CSX as well as the Florida Railroad System, and at this point in time, it has been CSX, as well as the county, we've met with them the last several weeks, probably eight weeks, I would say, from the city attorney's perspective and, and the county attorney. So we've, we've been working with them to make sure that this works out correctly. We would submit to, to you as a council to approve this. I would remind the council, just so that you're aware, we did, we did include then the million dollars for the city in the eighteen budget year, CIP, future year, not seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, out one year. We put the million dollar in our budget, knowing that we would have to come up with that million dollars. So we would just extend that from eighteen, nineteen to the nineteen, twenty, so we're still covered in, from that perspective. But the, the county still has to find either their funding source or make a decision if they're going to go out for debt for that. So that's a decision they have to make in the next year. The positive thing is we're still going forward with FDOT, still going forward to put up, draw up the design engineering piece of this project, and with the extension of putting the trail in the place of the rail where we can. We understand that there are some places where the rails exist and the train is currently running, and that we'll have to look at establishing a new trail either running parallel to that or another location. The thought process is it's about a twenty to twenty-four foot span where the rail system runs. Obviously, the rail system is about six to eight, so we have another various amount, whether it's six to eight to twelve foot, available to us. So there, there's a possibility that we can still use the existing land that's already part of this agreement. There could be some right-of-way acquisitions that we'll have to reach back out to CSX, and they're going to have to take care of that. So we do have some work to do, but I feel the county is in a very good position to support this process, and they're very active, as well as the MPO is very active in this process also, I will say. So we've also received support from the MPO, they've been involved in the process the whole time, and they've reached out to the county, or the state and the county, trying to be very active in this. So, yeah, I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Ms. Todd?
Yep, oh, so the extension will increase our cost.
By seven thousand?
By seven thousand, okay. It was confusing, I, and then it goes agreement for two million plus a fee to extend a fourteen five, so I'm assuming that's the total, so Lake County.
Has seven thousand.
Has seven thousand, two fifty, and we have seven thousand, two fifty. All right, yeah. I just wish we would hurry up and, you know, get this done and start getting it built. It was, Mr. Peters isn't here tonight.
No, he's not.
But I had, I had heard him express some concerns about use of the trestle that we have now as far as structural integrity.
One here on Tremaine?
Yeah, the Tremaine trestle.
That's going to be, I'll tell you right now, that's being replaced, okay? But it's going to be, it's going to be replaced with brand-new wooden structure, and it's going to look basically like it does now, but always going to be newer, you know, newer foundations and everything, and they're going to make a small, when you look at it, looking at north on the left side, you will have a pedestrian, a sidewalk going to be put there where there isn't now. So that's going to be placed in that.
That's news to me, I thought that they.
And that's been discussed quite a bit in the past, it's been shown to the council.
The, and the council, I believe, agreed that, that the walkway, the, the rail top would have been enhanced, improved with, it'd be wood, initially it was going to be concrete, then it was going to be wood.
It's going to be wood.
But that the original trestle itself would remain.
On the, on the top, yes, that's staying. The wood structure underneath is going to.
No, the wood structure, the legs.
And it has to go, they're, 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 they're not structured, they're dangerous. They can, they can't go for another hundred years.
That's, that was not my, that was not my understanding of the process, but be that as it may, that's a discussion for another time. I just wanted to make sure that this was moving along and we're still, you know, I'd like to be able to use that bike trail before I have to use it in a hover round, so.
Hello, I'll come in.
Yeah, don't come in.
Mr. Rothson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Think economic development and think Wakava an innovation district. I'm, I for one, am not going to vote to terminate this contract and have every biker and hiker on my back, that's not going to happen on my vote. And we have, we have marketed this concept for years, several years at least, and all , quote un, we're losing is the seven thousand dollars in waiting, but we have to do that, it's necessary to do that. And during that two-year hiatus, I'm here to suggest there might be some unique funding sources we don't know about today. Hopefully. We've got two years to do this, or one year, depending on where some funds, MPO supports it, that's, that's a great asset. So I, it's, I agree with Councilman Tillot that sooner than, sooner than later, and it's a great, it will be economic development from Mount Dora like you've never seen before. Thank you.
Mr. Krail?
I agree, I'm anxious for it to get underway, but the fact of the matter is, we can't move ahead until the county is in a position to move ahead. This doesn't really slow us down because all the planning and so on can continue, and for seventy-two hundred and fifty dollars, we bought, we bought a year for the county to figure out how they're going to pay for their part and for us to seek alternative funding and so on as well. So I, I think this is certainly the best of the three alternatives that are available to us right now. We could not go ahead without the county, we certainly don't want to cancel, this is, this is the way we have to go.
And, and I think the other opportunity we have, and, and we have an opportunity to make this a, have some landscaping opportunities along the route, we, we have an opportunity to improve it versus where we might have been last year or the year before. We also have a super opportunity, I think, for our roundabout to, to be established in the triangle section. Again, it helps that whole area because we know the train's coming through there. So there's a lot of things that I think are happening and that will work for, to our advantage in the sense of opening that trail. You know, we can go ahead and start, as we have been advertising it, we have the Tremaine Trail, we have some other areas that we get to use already, so I think it's, the important piece there is making sure that we market all of that because we do have a lot of it within our control. The other opportunity this does is it, it opens up the door for our water sewer infrastructure to be put into place along, parallel, maybe, we'll, we'll look into it, along the tracks, and allow us to establish a very, again, a pleasant-looking system coming into town that we know we have to, at least, if something else, we have to bury the, the pipe, you know, we make the same level, if you want to call it, such that the tracks, so it, it just gives us a lot of opportunities to, to do that type of thing. And we were looking at probably that time period anyway because the project wasn't completely engineered. So even if we would have had the money this year for the city, we have to finish engineering the project, and we're, that's part of the state as well as the county. So really extending the timeline, really all it does is allows the engineering to go forward, and then I'm sure CSX and FCRR will not be opposed if we come up with money early. So I'm sure we could exercise that contract early if we needed to.
Good, that's good. Okay, any other comments from council? Seeing none, anybody from the public wish to address this issue? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Okay, that, and some discussion items, and I'm not know how long some of these discussion items might take. If, if the council, would you like to take a little ten-minute break, ten minutes? And never happens five, you know. We'll say five will be ten, right? Okay, see you guys back there in five minutes.